Okay, I am live. Welcome all, or welcome to the four people. Tell me how I sound, guys. Uh, if I sound okay, let me know. Um. Let me turn on my actual controller since I've been on standby. Tell me if you could also hear like the, um, PlayStation home music and welcome only will the development and findings for this project could lead to other revivals? Uh, yes and no. Uh, basically, uh, Hey, welcome to the livestream, but yeah, um, This project can help out other projects because, uh, Certain games use like the same servers, so whatever findings we possibly, um, can utilize for other servers, then, uh, yeah. I'm just gonna wait till like maybe One more person joins, but I got like seven people in here already, but, uh, Today, once I get like a good amount of people joining, then yeah. So everything, alright, cool, cool, cool. If the music too loud over my voice or everything is like straight in terms of this. Cause I, I added actually like some custom music to my livestream, uh, oriented around PlayStation home, so. Instead of just me and you hear my keyboard click all day, I thought it was a good touch. Oh damn, your CID got banned? One of my friends' CID's just got banned. I don't know if Sony's doing a Spin around. What is PlayStation home about? Um, PlayStation home is a social world that was on the PlayStation 3. And basically, it was a place where people could socialize and just like play mini-games, uh, just talk to people. And, uh, this actually is an offline debug client that I'm playing in now on my PlayStation 3. Alright, so we got 10 people in here, alright. So, What I'm gonna do as of right now, we're gonna be just working on clothing today and I'm just prepping up, Uh, whatchamacallit. Just a version 1.23 patch that I'm gonna release for y'all guys soon. Um, I'm starting from scratch while doing this, in terms of this, and, uh, yeah. Alright, so 14 people are joining in. Thank you guys for the likes, thank you guys for the stream. Um, let me go ahead and open up OBS really quickly, so I can, uh, Open up my window capture. Cause I'm trying to get a Prodigy Target Manager to show up. Not too sure why it's not showing up, cause I wanna show you guys like the debug logs. I mean, I guess I could have it over screen, but I really wanted it over just, uh. If not, it's fine, I really. Nah, kinda, sorta like that. Well, I'll try to fix the debugs logs later, but, uh, what I'm gonna do now is trying to, uh, Whatchamacallit, just start and implementing clothing, so. Let me go ahead and I could start from here really quickly. And I'm gonna go ahead and test out some clothing I do wanna add. Um, there's this one item I wanna add right now. It's like this Japanese coffin, that it was like a Japanese home item, I, I know for sure. Yeah, so. I think it was made from Peek-a-Box if I'm not too mistaken. Let me check the objects folder. Oh, yeah, this is cool too. Junas, one of my friends, he did, uh, Add the actual icon to it, so that's nice. So it'll pop up in the wardrobe. Um. Let me see the resources. Okay, so mail coffin. Let me see localization. It doesn't really tell me the company. I'm assuming it was from Peek-a-Box though. Irregardless, I'm just gonna add it into the game right now. And, uh, what I'm gonna do on my PC, Since I'm creating a patch for you guys, let me just name this Destination Home Patch 1.23, uh. And if you guys wanna add, or ask me any questions, feel free to. Alright, so let me add this to user directory really quickly. Okay, so I got user dir. Okay, now what I'm gonna do is Open up the coffin. Alright, and I'm just gonna paste this in the build. I just wanna make sure like the actual item pops up. And the item should pop up on my back, cause I used to own this back on PlayStation home For my Japanese account, so it's pretty cool that we did get this item archived. Cause I, I do like, uh, a lot of Japanese home items. Alright, so we got our item code right here, the UU ID. I'm gonna go ahead and, uh, whatchamacallit, have I seen a Dust 5.14 drone? Um, I'm gonna be setting that up today. Let me see something if I could get it popped up now, the window. I got so many windows. Okay, yeah, Prodigy is now on the screen now, so at least you could see somewhat of the logs. Let me just drag it to the side right here and I'm gonna make this a little bit bigger. Trying to like level that. Alright, it may not be too perfect. Let me see. Alright, yeah, that's fine. I'm not trying to do anything too crazy. Alright, so. Yeah, I'll be taking a look at Dust 5.15's, or 5.14 drone today, and then, uh, we'll be taking a look at that. So. What I gotta do really quickly is, uh, let me open up the commands list I have. Cause I shouldn't remember it, but I don't know the full command. This command I'm using is going to allow me to scan my clothing items, so. Alright, there you go. Personal, Person Local Set Clothing Component. Uh, this command allows me in-game to Basically put an item on in real time without scrolling through a thousand items. And this will test if like the item will pop up just fine. So let me open up Prodigy really quickly. And, uh, let me see. Alright, so User 9 is not even set up, so I gotta set up my Timestamps and input on screen so it can, uh, toggle back, alright, so. Alright, so yeah, here's the big ass coffin I was talking about. I remember this was from Japan home, so the item works, the textures look fine and everything. And this was a male item, so it looks straight. So, that's good. Let me go ahead and, uh, house tour. What space you wanna see? I could, if you guys wanna see certain spaces, let me know and I could jump to them really quickly. Since, uh, this livestream, I'm really just trying to focus on clothing, so I really don't mind, uh, where we Are going in terms of that, but if you guys wanna see any spaces, let me know, type in the chat. And, uh, yeah, we could go there while I try to set up some clothing. The next clothing item I, uh, wanna do, which piqued my interest, was the, um, Whatchamacallit, the sodium, uh, Whatchamacallit, I'm trying to think of the actual space, uh, the sodium development, uh, like dev shirt for females. I think somebody really wanted that item, so. I saw it in there and I was like, oh, that's cool. I usually always love like development stuff, whether it be like development kits, uh, rare games, Uh, in-game like internal development, I just always generally like that irregardless if it was for home. So I have the item halfway set up. I have to, uh, get To Object Catalog. Or I gotta actually set up the XML so they could run, which I'm doing now really quickly, so. I'm setting up the resource XMLs and, uh, object ones. Let me just place that with the UU ID. And, uh, I have to, uh, let me see something really quickly. So, and I gotta set up the, um, other stuff within it. Wondering if the Idolmaster video in Namco Arcade? Where does that video actually go? Because, uh, we could take a look really quick. I think I have Namco Arcade saved in my favorites. Cause I know I put a custom video, but was there supposed to be a video on the side of the screen? If you have the video Kyle, uh, send it to me and I can, uh, try to put it back on screen, cause I think I had an issue with it. Cause my goal is trying to get everything for like its original content. And thank you guys for the seven likes, thank you guys for the, uh, or 14 people who are watching, thank you. So, as well, I don't even know how long I'm gonna be doing the livestream itself. Uh, just, I'm basically doing this straight up raw, so I, I don't know how I'm gonna go. Oh snap, I'm hearing myself, uh. Hear myself twice. Oh, so this is the actual sodium Lockwood, uh, development shirt? Okay, well, that's cool. Alrighty, so I found the actual image. I need to open up Photoshop really quickly as well. Uh, to do this. Also, I'm going to, uh, drag this folder in. Or actually, I'mma clear out everything. Or close out all, let me just say no to all. Alright, cause I'm trying to start fresh when I do these items. Oh, you have it Kyle? Nice. Thank you, uh, I'll download that right now. File's actually pretty. Uh, the Idolmasters are usually on a small screen next to the soda machines, okay? Uh, so I see what you're saying. The thing is about that, I could either turn off this video right here, because in offline client, there's always a major issue. Um, either there is, um, Example, this, like, this screen right here, I would have to turn it off in order to get that one running. Which I don't mind, because this is a custom one and I always, I can remember where I put this at. I could still have it in the build. Oh, this song? Oh yeah. Wait. Did I just freeze for a second? I think I did, cause my, my internet went. But yeah, what I could do is to take off the screen. And I can, uh, whatchamacallit. I mean, yeah, I could take off the screen, put maybe like a picture up here, something centralized around this space. And then I could add that one. And Tech 6 trailer might be on the big screen, on that one? Yeah, I really don't remember, cause it's been like a really long, long time. I lagged out for a second, I think it's cause I was downloading your video. Um. Let me see something really quick though. What I'm gonna do now though is really quickly, uh, just set up Photoshop so I can get ready for my icon setup. Cause my internet is complete trash sometimes, or usually all the time. Alright. Let me, um, trying to get the actual video, it's tough. Alright, so we can make the icon for the Lockwood thing really quickly. Alright, I think the video's almost done. Hopefully I won't lag again, because I had to pause it. Alright, I mean, this looks fine. I mean, it can't be too perfect. I mean, that's kinda off looking. I don't know. Let me try to make the icon look better. Alright, that's fine. So let me, um, actually find the item I'm working on, alright. Small. Alright. Now, um, let me just go ahead and turn off Discord, cause I'm hearing the little beeps in my ear. Alrighty, so we got the image done for this. And let me drag the item here. I mean, if the world maps are too believed, banned Namco logo places there, unless that's just not there. Um, I'm not too sure About that. But, um, we're gonna go ahead and, um, Replace The, um, actual video right here. I'm gonna try to get some Namco themed, uh, alright. Hey, Element2EU. We found actually, uh, Element, we actually found, not the Lockwood development shirt, but we found the female version of a sodium development shirt. Which I'm trying to restore now. Oh, so you're just saying like there's a bandai, or excuse me, you think there's just a bandai Namco logo like that goes in this big screen? Is that what you're saying Kyle? Cause if that's the case, we could just put that. And I could just slap that on there. That'll be pretty easy to do and then we could transfer, uh, this video via right here and slap that over. So. Cause if that's the case, we could just, uh, let me see, logo. I'm gonna create, uh, we could actually do that, even if it's not there, I'm down to do that. Um, let me just go ahead and make the whole like Photoshop bucket I'm working with like white, um. I'm trying to get a really large logo, so let me look on Google for large logos. Please be it. Alright, so we could save that. Bop. Alright, so let me just center the logo. Alright, so that's pretty, looks pretty straightforward, I mean. And then we can, uh, go ahead and I'll place this logo Right here, I'll just call it Namco Logo PNG. And, uh, we could switch the screens later. But let me, um, go ahead and try to fix up the clothing really quick, so. Alright, there's all these of these, uh, catalog entry things I have to take place. So, catalog entry? Alright, so I know I have to switch this over, this is a tours for women. And while we here actually, since we gotta be messing with women clothing, Uh, or female clothing, I have to, uh, switch to my female avatar, so let me load up my dummy female avatar. Uh, so I should be a female right now. Alright, so yeah, I'm in my female avatar. Now, what I gotta do is, um, Set the. Alright, so boom. Let me change out the UU ID so it could run. Alright, and then, uh, let me save. Next one, editorial XML is done, localization XML is done. Entitlement, uh, I need to change that, so. Riggs, uh, the metadata needs to switch since it's a female. Tours for torso. Uh, I need to get the prefix, so it's called like female dev team, okay? Oh, and I gotta fix the, um. Alright, so that script is done. ODC needs to be, uh, done. I don't know if this is the correct one per se. Damn, hold on. Let me check this, ODC versus my other ODC, because that kinda looks different. Oh, the ODCs don't look too much different. Alright, well, that's fine. Oh snap, that is. Alright, I'm literally copying way too much of this whole thing. Alright, so let me go ahead and copy this UU ID, let me go ahead and save that. Alright, so boom. So that we read from the ODC itself, um, and give me one second, guys and girls. Um, I will actually Read back in the chat, I'm just trying to, uh, fix All of this data so I can make sure I'm doing it right. Alright, I know sodium was from Lockwood, so that will be that. And then. Alright, so everything looks pretty much good. Uh, the resources look good, validations look okay, metadata looks okay. Alright, everything looks straight for the most part. What I'm gonna do now is take the sodium shirt, um, Let me test it before I actually, uh, put it in, uh, An actual directory. And then, what I'm gonna do is, I'm gonna go ahead and go back to Harbor Studio so you guys could get a better picture, Cause I know sometimes, uh, home with dark spaces, look there. Oh, thank you for the donation shitware. That's what's up. Oh really? That's what's up too. And thank you guys for the likes and thank you guys for the stream, so. Alright, so I'm back in Harbor really quickly. But, uh, let me go ahead and type in this command. Alright, so if I type this in really quickly, the item should pop up. Alright, so here's the actual development item for females. So, if I go here and debug cam, You could kinda see, this is like the sodium development t-shirt for females, so I guess Any female workers that used to work at Lockwood, uh, would have this official shirt, so it wasn't for like the regular, like, user. I think it looks pretty cool on females. Um, but what I'm gonna do now is, since it looks like I could use this as a good picture. So, let me, uh, Let me actually rename this folder before I, uh, save it. So, V, Patch 1.33. I can't believe, uh, I did over about 23 patches, that is crazy. Even though some patches may be smaller than others, um, I still enjoy doing it for the community. Alright, and I'm gonna make a, make another folder and I'mma call, uh, Update Pictures, or Destination Home 1.86 Update Pictures. If you guys ever notice, um, I like to leave like update pictures inside the actual update itself. So you guys could see like the work that has been put into the build, just to show like a little minor showcase. But we could call this a sodium female dev shirt. Alright, and that's basically it. Also, um, So what I'm gonna do is go ahead and create another picture. So let me, uh, go here really quickly, uh, load Avatar Cardigan. So I should be in my mail shirt really quickly, or my mail avatar. And then, uh, let me go ahead and, alright, yeah, cause I want a picture of the coffin itself, so. And actually, I like this outfit, so I'm gonna, uh, load avatar, or let me make a command really quick. Save Avatar. Um, I'mma call this Cardigan 1. Yeah, why not? And now, uh, Let me go ahead and save a picture of it, so I can add that to the build. Alright, and then we could just call this, uh, Japanese Home Coffin. Alright, and then I'mma take another picture since the, since this is like, uh, Like I wanna get the full image of the coffin, like front and back, if that makes sense, so. I could just call this, uh, Japanese Home Coffin 2. Alright, so we're done with the pictures, we could go ahead back into Namco really quickly. And then let me read back in the chat. Uh, what's the UU ID for that? Uh, the sodium hub? Here, I'll send it really quick. It's this. And hey, Miss Betty Boo, thank you for joining. I mean, not sodium hub, I'm hearing myself talk, but, uh, yeah. Um, but we're gonna go back in Namco and we're gonna switch the screens. Let me look at my, Hold on. What I'm gonna do as well, I like to keep a log of patch notes, so what I usually do to save time, I just usually use the same, uh, template. So we're gonna put the big, uh, 1.23. Alright, so 7.15, alright, so screen links. Let me just make a section for clothing though. Clothing, and then I can make it all look pretty, but I just want the minor patch notes. Uh, I could say, I want the official name for the coffin, so. So. And then, uh, what is the? Trying to think of the name, oh, sodium dev, uh, tank top, female. And then I restore that, so. Alright. Just want to write my notes so far, so I won't get too ahead of myself. Alright, but now we're gonna go ahead and take a look at the, we could delete this from, We could delete this folder from the actual program, notepad I'm working with. But now I'm trying to see, uh, where did I place the, um, Namco Arcade Environments BNG Carrot, okay? So let me go to my environments folder and then we're gonna get started working on the video. Let me just make sure the video and the codex is correct, cuz I may have to downgrade it. Kyle, was this, okay, yeah, this looks pretty much the same. And it's four minutes long, okay? So, and oh, actually... There's no thumbnails for the sodium top? Uh, yes, there is. Hey Nagato, I sent the link of my PlayStation home in Discord. Oh, really? Thank you, Adrian. Hey, Juggalo, thank you for watching. Um, I have the actual image. If you DM me on uh Discord, I could send it to you, or you could just wait until I uh do the actual patch for itself. I just, I just found it. So... Let me see, so let me read this dot scene and then let me read the screen link, so it's... Alright, this is weird, it's reading screen links from uh another location, so BNG Carrot 3? Let me see. So it reads all of our videos from another directory, which is odd. Wait, I already had this video, I think, maybe, cuz this says idle. Now let's see what happens. There wasn't a dov- for the thumbnails I have. This PlayStation home gonna be a PKG file? Hey, what's up, um? For the offline client, they, it's quote-unquote a offline PKG, but you still need Prodigy Target Manager to run it, but like the home online clients, uh yeah, you can install them as PKGs because uh like, any game that was created via for PlayStation 3 has a quote-unquote PKG file, or it has like a BD ROM version if it's like a disc. But any game you see for PlayStation 3 or even, yeah, for PlayStation 4 and PSP and Vita, they use PKG files to extract out. Alright, so the Namco thing worked. But this video didn't pop up on the side right here. Uh... Wait, I hear it, but I don't see it, so I don't know if it's like a codec issue, or it's like a... A video issue. I hear, I heard it. So, what we're gonna do is go back to the video content and hopefully the image you sent me or the video you sent me will actually work, because I really do, if we could restore it, then yeah. Other than that, I may have to try to reformat the video. And start elsewhere, but I'm gonna check logs to see what it states. Thumbnails, texture... Yeah, it should be loading from... Um, hopefully this will work though, cuz I heard the video, I think the other one maybe was like a codex issue. Thank you for the 17 people who are watching. Oh, there it go, I think. Oh, so we fixed it, Kyle. Good stuff. So we got the regular Namco one, and uh we got this working. So we got the official one playing now. I wish we, um, more than likely, if we somehow find the little mini games, I could probably restore it, but I didn't find that in anyone's data. But I do remember the idle mass and stuff, so thanks Kyle for that. We could add that to the list of things that we just uh conferred, basically. So... So, let's go ahead. My patch. Alright, so Namco Arcade centered, I have the original screen link from offline cache data, so I'll tag you in for helping me out with that, because I ain't even know where that file was, so thank you. Um, so yeah. De-listed the Namco Arcade uh Volume 3 video. Alright, so that's pretty much good to go. And let me go ahead and add the... The sodium... Alright, so that's good. But um, I think I'm not too done with Namco yet, I may wanna do like two to three more posters right here, so it like toggles, I want something like Bandai. The video has audio, yeah. And oh, really? Nice. The Japanese trailer for the PSP version of Tekken 6 is over-recovered. Was that... Was that for the Tekken Mashabitsu Lab? Cuz I think the video I put... Oh, I'll show you, the video I put has like some issue, like it freezes mid... I may use that video for it as just a Tekken 6 Mashabitsu Lab, if you have that, send that over and I could uh download that. Bruh, there's so many spaces I have to go through. Alright, yeah, here's the lab. Alright. And thank you guys for watching, thank you for the likes, I appreciate it. Alright. The music is still playing in the background, right? I think In Control, or We In Control is playing right now. I just wanna make sure you guys are hearing it as much as I'm hearing it, and hopefully it's not going over my voice. That's why I've been trying to set this up all day. Yeah, so I tried to restore the space with this video, like, it's a random like Tekken 6 promo video, I think. And it will like freeze. Yeah, so it like would freeze right here. But uh, what I'm gonna do now is go ahead and create uh the environments folder, so we can actually add this patch in really quickly. So, let me find the environments folder. After this livestream, um, hopefully I will have the patch out today, I'm not too sure, cuz I just wanted to get some work done. Cuz I'm trying to take a day off myself and just play some games. When you release PlayStation home, does it still recommend a keyboard and mouse? Uh... Uh, maybe so. But yeah, PlayStation home, yeah, you can still use keyboard and mouse. It maybe is corrupted, I don't know, I downloaded it from like a... I don't think home ever used a mouse, but I know it utilized like KB, like you could use a keyboard. But let me go ahead and create these file paths. BNG Carrot 3, and then uh, let me go ahead and create another folder, or... Let me see. Bruh, where is it? Okay. Just wanna make sure I'm doing these folders correctly, and oh my god, I got like five uh messages. Alright, I'm reading yours though. Oh, thank you for that, so it's downloading now. Why? Failed error. Nice. I need to play Final Fantasy VII, I bought it a long time ago. I mean, I remember that the English version of the PSP trailer was on the big screen in Namco K. Not really sure, cuz I didn't visit that space. Yeah, I'm not too sure, bro, but uh since it's deemed around Tekken 6, I don't mind it, cuz at least the version of the videos from home, so it's some. Because I was wondering if I could use my... Yeah, you could use the original PlayStation 3 controller. And actually, what I need to do is uh, I should've did this when I started the livestream. Freaking uh whatchamacallit. Should've promoted this on my Twitter, I'll do it now, actually. And I'll retweet it. But um, what was I doing? Oh yeah, I was trying to set up the environment, or wait, not the environment. I was trying to set up the screen content folder, so we can add it manually to the patch. And I have to uh get the screen links correct. So, screen content, I can make this one video. We're gonna go ahead and just place this all in video. Okay, then uh, let me make sure my screen links are actually saved, okay, so... Alright, so the screen content is pretty much good. Alright, and the other video is now fine. But yeah, I really do appreciate you guys just staying around and tuning in, but we're gonna go ahead and fix this video since it has a freezing issue, and uh, yeah. But let me go ahead and find where I have uh the video located at. Let me go ahead and get off Twitter. Alright, so, let me find the actual list. So, should be called like Tekken? Tekken 6 Mishabitsu Recreation Lab? Alright, so it's called BNG Tekken 6 Lounge 7. Alrighty, well, let's go to that file location and get started. I always have to go back to my references list, cuz there's over like 200,000 folders, there's over so many mini folders, so I really can't remember, like, I do remember the ones I frequently go into, like the Japanese home section, which is like home internal stuff. That's like the file location, like prefix, so I always remember that. BNG Tekken, BNG, oh, there it go. So let's look at the dot scene and let's see where it refers to. Alright, so screen links, BNG Tekken 6 Space 1. I might as well just share it to uh you guys here. So... Oh wait, you found something, Kyle? Is it a video, is, hold on? Oh, the promotion video? Which one? Oh, it's not? Well, I don't know what it's doing, like, I don't know if it's downloading, yeah. I need to probably re-download it and then we could probably like overlay it for, we could do like a toggle too. Why does my Vita say that I have less than 1GB? Uh, is your, ask you to Vita setup correctly? Uh, Blizz? Cuz I know if you have like a really high a card, then uh you may run into that issue, but this is in Tekken 6 Space 1, so it's weird how uh... I just had like a brain freeze, hold on. Let me check out the screen links really quickly and uh... Why is it reading from? I honestly don't know. Wait, what? Trying to, trying to confuse. Um... I guess it wants to read from here? Alright, well we're just gonna place this video. Alright, and then, let's go ahead and reload the space now, and hopefully the Tekken video will get fixed. Oh, I thought I just froze. Oh no, I took a screenshot somehow, I was like, oh no. Like, bruh, I really do not wanna freeze right now. Let me quit out of Discord and other stuff. Are you able to grab the videos from the Namco's screen links? Uh, sadly no, because it's not leading back to any websites, rather than it's just requesting like where the location should be. Um... We could actually do a little quick thing about that though. Let me try to GitHub uh... I'm trying to find, it was like a... Maybe this was it? I don't even know. It was like a tree thing though. I can't remember. Give me one second, I'll toggle off the screen. Oh no, that's not the screen I wanna toggle off. Nope, you could leave that on. Alright, give me one second, and then I'm gonna toggle the screen off, because I think I have it in like my archives, I just got some personal stuff. Why is it freezing still? What? Why is that video reading? Yeah, it could just be an offline client. Oh, you're using a 32GB one? Check if you have any random data. What, I don't even think that's the same video. What? I don't even think that's the same video, is it? Cuz, bruh. Oh, this is the wrong video entirely, though. Oh, I'm just confused. Oh, I definitely did this wrong. Okay, I don't even know what the, what I'm looking at right now. Alright, Tekken 6, let's read. Where, where is the screen link? Tekken, or Bng-Tekken 6 Space 1. So we're in the right place. Okay... Tekken 6 screen. This is odd. This is not, I think it's this one. Maybe I did the resources wrong? Cuz it's reading the old file for whatever reason. Oh, hold on, hold on. I think I messed it up again cuz I think it's gonna read. Oh no, it fixed itself. Alright, so let's see if this video fully runs. Hopefully it doesn't freeze, though. But, um... We could do another screen link fix. So, oh, that's not it. Let me type this down. Tekken... 6. Yeah, so the video looks like it's running fine. Alright, so Mishiba... Or Mishima. Dai Batu. I'm just trying to write my patch notes now, so when I go back to it, I'm like, what? Alright, added original. So thank you for that, Kyle, once again. I think it fits the space. Since, you know, Tekken 6 did of course come out from the PSP. Um, there was a minigame here. Or like a game launcher to Tekken 6, I should say. And now let's add this into the official client, so... Let's me, let me go to my desktop and create the patch now. So, Bng... So, Tekken 6 is good. Alright, so screen content is up. And then, uh, let's go to video. And then, uh... I don't know which one. It's this one. Alright, so that is done. How did you get PlayStation home back? I am utilizing a, uh... Whatchamacallit. Uh, offline client, which is a 1.86 dev build and I'm running this on my PlayStation 3. Sorry for a second. I'm like reading through the chat and I had like a brain freeze for a second. But yeah, you can see here I'm running this off, uh, my PlayStation 3 via with Target Manager. This project's crazy. Yeah, it is, for sure. I'm pretty sure Tekken 6 PSP trailer. Yeah, I mean, it is what it is. I don't mind it being in here. Warhol Command Station? Let's try Wipeout. I haven't utilized Wipeout. Kyle, do you actually happen to have any Wipeout videos? Uh, do you know if it played any Wipeout videos? Like this space? Alright, so... Alright, let me just close that down. You got the personal drone? Let me check that out. Nice. Oh, you found multiple ones? Okay. Let me see some real quick. Let me go to my little dummy txt. Hold on. But, uh... I'm just gonna put the drones aside for a second. I just wanna have the UUID ready when I have to go back and test it. Oh, okay, cool. Uh, but yeah, let's go and wipe out. I don't know if the space played videos, though, or I guess it did. Let's see if it... So I guess it did. Screen content. Oh, video screen, the hell? Oh, it's this one. So there's only one. Um, we can see what video, or maybe we could... If, if it's like requesting online server stuff... We can maybe, uh, check. Let's check logs really quick, though. Wipeout, screen content. Let me do something. Um... Let me see something. Cuz I know I found a website that, uh... Hold on. Okay. Now... Alright, so... This website may help me cuz it's like a tree of like a full server database. Speaking of, uh, like where content was at, so let me... I don't know. If not, we couldn't like do a custom video. Hey, welcome. Hold on. Is there a space that hasn't have a video screen? There's a ton of it, but I'm trying to like figure out on how to restore. I could just do a custom one, though. So, um, I may do that, though. It may be just... There's also stuff for MP4s for DJ booth. Let me see. Alright, Wipeout Home Space, that's where it's located. I wonder if the DJ booth where it was referencing the MP4s, did that actually play audio or was it the minigame itself? Cuz I think I found the minigame, but it had encrypted Lua, so I couldn't restore it. Other than that, I would've, uh, definitely tried to restore it. But let me find a Wipeout folder and then we could work there. Um... I'm literally having like a brain freeze. There it go. Alright, so where is it? Okay, screen content. Please like reference something for online at all? Nope, it's all set to offline, which is good, but, uh, it's pretty bad as well because I wanted the, this. So, video 1 hub? Alright, we're gonna get maybe like a nice video. Hold on, did you send something? Hold on, Kyle, was that the Wipeout video? Oh, really? You found it? Nice, nice, nice. We could actually do that. Cuz that'd be easy. I'm assuming video 1 hub is this one right here. Or this one right here. Well, nice, bro. Alright, so it's already down. Let me, uh, see something. Oh, this looks like the old Wipeout, like from my PlayStation 1. Let's see. Let's just copy this. I don't even wanna change the screen link name. We could just do this. Alright, now let's reload Wipeout and then I'm gonna go ahead and create my notes and hopefully this works. And then we can add this to next patch. Alright, so... Alright, so it's Wipeout Museum. Alright, so yeah, the video's playing. And this is like the old PlayStation 1 Wipeout. This makes me wanna play some old PS1 Wipeout, so we could just say added original content from cache data. Good stuff, though. Cuz I, I don't even know like... I didn't even... I didn't even know I wanted to like do this space today. Alright, so that is done. Let's go ahead and add that to the patch. So we won't forget. Wipeout Home Space. And tell me, guys, do you like me playing some like original home music in the background while I do these? Cuz I know for the last livestreams, I know, uh, you just hear me bang on my keyboard and accidentally hit my knee against my desk. Which isn't too appeasing, however, uh... You know, I think this maybe adds some, you know... Some nostalgia while I do these live streams. It keeps me alert, too, cuz I'd be sometimes sleepy. That does make sense. Like, I really do like the Wipeout space. Like, I love the attention of detail. Like, look at this. It shows like Wipeout HD, the PSP, the original PlayStation 1. And it also have like the Japanese version of like the cover art. Like, I really, like, think, for sure. Um, like, stuff like this I always really like to see in games. Like, that's why I miss PlayStation home. Like, little stuff like that is actually really, uh, cool. I think this is a video screen back here. Oh wait, what the hell is that? Is that the screen or it's like... That looks like leaderboard stuff, but this may be a screen behind him. Uh, sadly, I don't think I can, uh, add too much to this cuz I can't have two screens running at once. Let me see. I don't know if this was a screen. If anybody knows if this was a screen or not, uh, let me know. Maybe it was just something for the interactive minigame. Nice. Ooh, I'm, I'm freezing a little bit. Let me, I don't know. Let's take a look cuz it, it's referencing video 2 Hangar, video 2 DJ Booth. The best way we could do this is throw a test file. Uh... Let's see, something, Wipeout. Game. Let's do Wipeout HD and I'm gonna try to get a really clear photo of it. Cuz I think the space is based off it. We could just get like a test image showing the game. Like, that looks pretty okay to me. And then, uh, yeah. Cuz I can't have MP4s playing or I'm gonna run into memory issues. However, we can just, uh... Leave... A section. Alright, so where did I save the picture? Alright. Let's see references to it, I just don't... Hopefully, maybe it's not to the minigame, but let's reload the space. Cuz that'd be a bummer. Oh, happy birthday to him. Maybe if that's the one to the DJ booth, keep that for later. Ah, so you can put pictures here. Was there a list of songs you can vote for in that screen? Maybe, because I know that there's definitely a DJ game, like a minigame. Like, uh... Like, this dude would actually like play some songs, however, he is a whatchamacallit. And I think I'm lagging a little bit. I had a cutoff. Like, his minigame has encrypted Lua scripts, that's what I'm trying to say. So, uh... I'm trying to see. We can add like multiple screens here? But, um... Trying to get really, uh, clear images. Oh, that actually looks pretty damn good. I like that one. We can add like, I don't wanna do too much cuz of memory issues, but, uh... That looks kinda blurry, so I don't like that one. Oh, this is showcasing from RPCS 3. Ooh, that looks actually good. See, stuff like that I think I like better. Like, the ones that show, uh, like the actual machines. I like the racers. Alright, I may actually, uh, change some of these, but, um... Okay, we can, I don't know how, I never really pushed the limit to memory sources. Oh snap, no, we don't want too much. Alright, we could do this much. I'm gonna add these four. So let me see. Alright, we got that one. Alright, so that's one. I'm not gonna really change the names, I'm just gonna leave them as the base files since I'm kinda too lazy to change them. If I really wanna change the source to the names or the file names, I can, but uh it really doesn't matter cuz at the end of the day uh like, no one really cares about that, just like myself. Alright, so. Um, high score HSML. The HSML screen was definitely probably the one it's probably referencing, is trying to request something online, but I I don't know what it will be for. Probably they're like a minigame. But uh, I'll pin that then. Cuz we could come back to that. Can you get to the other side of the wipeout space? Yeah, remember to, yeah, you got some mask, but uh. What other video screen? If there is, we could add that and we could split too. Um, let's look. Ooh, see there's memory issues, so something didn't like that. Let me actually cuz I'm, see this is the issue, right? When it's too much uh like, when you have too much high quality videos, I mean videos or like uh pictures, you may get a texture issue and this is like a bad thing cuz I have to fix it. Cuz I don't know where I, what I did wrong. But uh what video screen? This one up here? This one was for a leaderboard, so I really can't do anything about that. That's just for that, but. Oh, is it behind here or something? Oh no, that's just. Unless you're talking about like this. Oh, it's a poster that was right here. Well, this is a poster. This was like for the game itself though. Oh, there is a screen, you're right. Um, okay. We can uh. There's a one that's outside. Is it on a building or something? Or was it the one I just found? Sorry if I'm like tweaking for a second, but I'm I'm kinda interested in this poster right there. Okay, so let me look at the referencing to this. Where is it? Still Fissar DDS? Bruh. Let me uh. I actually don't know cuz I, maybe these posters are like embedded within the actual uh space itself, so let me try something really quick. I'm gonna go to my scene list where I have like everything located. So let me try to find it, wipeout. But if it's not, then it's probably server based. Hopefully, maybe they're not server based and then we can fix it. But I, there there's two issues I gotta combat. I have to possibly fix these mini screens here or I could put like custom stuff. But I gotta figure out that screen as well. Alright, so let's see if the, if I find, oh, I didn't find it, oof. That's kinda bad. Well, it's not bad, it's just I would have to uh. Try to find a method on how to uh do this. But we're getting a texture issue, which I don't like. What the hell? Alright, so that video did not like that. See, this is like the bad thing of testing sometimes cuz uh you gotta figure out. And also, what is that over here though? Sounds like audio, but what is that? Look at that, guys. See, this is sometimes like out of world, what is this? Oh, it's a moving object, I guess. Maybe it's a plane or something? The thing is moving. That's why I'm like, what? Let's see if we can catch it. Oh, so these are just like moving uh like ships and stuff. Okay, I thought that was like some other crazy stuff, like what? I see what's behind the door sometimes. Always like trying to look through stuff. Sorry, I got curious for a second. But um I'm trying to fix. Let's see what video is giving me errors though, like cer- certain things is not like liking each other. AFS capture. Teams MP4. Let me see something really quick. Maybe this is it. I'm going to delete all the sources and we could start from scratch actually cuz I I don't know what caused it and how we could fix it. That's the bad thing when trying to add too much pictures at once. Have you found any unused files in home? Um, sometimes, like certain spaces may not request stuff. Or like developers may leave like random stuff that's not needed. But um I don't remember like a particular thing. Alright, so that works. Okay, so we can add uh. Let's see, we can add another screen here though, not the DJ booth. Let me make another one. I use like, what was it called? AG Systems or whatever? I'm trying to figure out. We can add these three, so. Let's go add three screens and then we're gonna toggle over. Alright, so that's one, that's two. Then uh we're gonna. Hopefully this doesn't cause any memory and then at least we know like the either the two videos I did add is causing some issues. Alright, so that looks straight right there. I wasn't even expecting to work on wipeout today, I'm just kinda randomly doing stuff as I go. And thank you guys for the likes. Thank you guys who are continuing to watch this. Hopefully, you know, I'm I'm trying to make these streams kinda bit more funner for you guys. But I'm trying to see though, like. I'm just, I'm kinda curious, like. Your car is that DDS? That didn't pop up at all. F. Alright, so let's check this out. Ooh, we got a texture issue, but which one is which? Is it both of them or it's just one? Cuz we could fix a texture issue. It's the red one? Maybe it's both of them. Alright, so let me see the dimen- it's probably the dimensions more than likely. Whatever this dimension was, we're gonna just leave that and we're gonna make a template on Photoshop to fix it. And no, I did not mean to open up Sony Vegas right now. That will slow down the hell out of my computer. Let me try to close the window in advance, but uh what I'm gonna do now is just make this picture and save it as a uh PNG. We're just gonna call this test. One. And we're gonna go to the file location. So let me go to. Alright, so that's new. Environment, okay. I'm trying to remember, starts with wipeout, so it's W. Starts with W, I mean, I mean, I can't even talk today. Alright, so blap, that's there. Alright, let's go ahead and, yeah, I'm not trying to make a video right now, trying to live streaming, so. Close all Vegas, okay, so that's done now, um. Alright, logs are not looking too crazy, it's just, it's just scanning, oh wait. Oh, EEF, whatever that one is having issues. So let's try uh. Test one PNG, let's see. Okay, so that's done, but yeah, if you guys wanna ask me any questions, we gonna try to get this fixed. The stream looking good, audio still good, guys, for those who are watching still. Alright, and oh my god, they are cutting grass behind my house. Alright, so what is the issue now? Alright, if you hear like people cutting grass, I do apologize, but uh yeah, and thank you for that. Alright, so I think it was just a issue. And bruh. This may get a little annoying. We're gonna, or with like a resize resolution issue. Alright, so let's save that as. Test two dot PNG. Alright, now, everything should be fine now. For like the most part. Let me close down some screens and then after that's done, or what I could do now, since just to get a little ahead of myself, we can uh create these folders that is needed. So user directory environments, wipeout home space. Oh, I already had half of it. I think all of the uh pictures are working fine now. We're not getting that uh AA zeros or whatever it's called, but yeah, at least those photos are done. I'm pretty like satisfied with this space now. Though small DDSs, I may try to like dig in cache data just to find them, like these little posters. Because I think they go for like each uh machine. Yeah, like this goes for that one and yeah. So, I'm pretty happy that we got those uh screens fixed, but now uh. Let me go ahead and copy the screen link right here and um, actually, I should've just copied a whole folder since I know it's working. Let me write this in my notes. Okay. Yes, so basically. Um, in terms of online, it's, it'll be kinda easy to work on patching. Okay. Just to reiterate what I was saying, cuz I know I've seen my stream going up and down a little bit, uh but um, yes. But yeah, basically for online though, to make it very simple and clean, whatever work I could possibly do to offline, I could basically port it to online, like i- it isn't too hard. So for example, all of the screen links and posters I've done for like the hub, uh Japanese Home Square, um it easily could be ran offline cuz I could just set everything to uh the server client or I could just locally host it. And then I can basically just have all of the videos and posters inside of like a server or I could just like have it packaged in, so like the space will have all of the videos, posters it needs to be and I could just have it packed in one, so either or. But let's go ahead and test out this Dust 5.1.4 thing. I don't, I think it's um. Where is the Dust 5.1.4 thing? I know I just seen it. Oh, there you go, already extracted it out. I was like, what? Alright, so let's just go ahead, it's a companion little thing thing. Alright, so let me uh, I think I already wrote it down. So let me um. Go ahead and initialize this. Failed to load new clothing, companion lower MDL. Is it because of the file name? Let's see the resources, cause it didn't like it, memory pool. Drone MDL. Dust Companion Drone MDL. Bruh. Hold on. I mean, it should be it. Failed to, well, it did load up the thing, it's a food thing. Um... Hmm. Let me see. I'm gonna check my internal database, oh shit, well, they don't need all that. Let me see. I mean, yeah, that's that, how big is that, that file? That's weird. I gotta see if it's, oh, it did load it, or it loaded it. Whoa, I could use Noesis just to see if that's like the actual MDL or something got renamed uh, differently. If not, we can basically fix it. But um... Alright, let's see, companion, dust companion. Bruh, where is it? Drone MDL. Yeah, this is like the drone, so what the hell? Why didn't it not like it? This is it though. Hmm. I may actually, but in the next segment, I'm gonna take a look at it a little bit off the screen because I'm not too sure, it could just be like a memory issue, which I have to debug, but um... This, I don't know if you guys remember this space, this was toward like the end of home though, but this was from uh, Granzilla. It's like, it's called Granzilla Sunset Lounge. But um, I'm just trying to like get a idea of how many screens, I'm not too sure if this was a screen, I mean, it looks like it, I know there was mad posters. I know this had like a video playing in here. Let me see something though, from the tree commands. Hold on. And I know like over here in this section for Granzilla Sunset Lounge, uh, whatchamacallit. This right here was like a little game where you could just skate through, like you could see here where it has like the arrows. If you had the skates on, um, these were like power-ups, so the goal was just to like do this as fast as possible while using a skate, and then using a goal, like it was a little racetrack. Like you could probably see here the official name maybe. Wait, what? I can't see what it says, to the starting point, okay. I think this was also a power-up too. It was like a little skate park, this, this low-key gives me like some Jetset Radio VOD feels. If you guys ever played a Dreamcast. But um... Let me see something. I'm gonna attempt to just look at this, I'm probably not gonna, I, I don't know. I'm just looking at it, just to see where, I need to see where is the stuff getting requested from though. Cause I don't even know, screen links, LG... Okay, hold on, hold on, hold on. I don't even, okay, there's just like so much errors, I don't, hold on. I just lost my place again. Ah, hold on, I went into the wrong section. Okay, well, that's a start. Nothing is getting requested from online, but it's like mad posters. Oof, yeah, that's a lot, but at least um... We can do something though, we can uh... We could go open up another tab on YouTube. And then I'm going to centralize by Granzilla. And then uh, we can uh, whatchamacallit. Let's see. We could just showcase some like random Granzilla stuff. It's like a special thanks of home ending, I think this is what the video is saying. Yeah, like I'm looking at the metadata, and it looks like uh, yeah. Yeah, this video is basically saying, thank you for, you know, purchasing our items. That's kinda sad, cause I'm looking at the referencing of time. Like I don't know Japanese, but just looking at the dates, like 2008, eight, and then 2015, the like, yeah, three? And just looking at the comments, it's just saying uh, you know, whatchamacallit. But I'm gonna download this video using my sketchy uh, download converter, that's I've been utilizing for like this big, or at least the offline side of the things, I should say. Probably online too, but don't wanna say too much on that. But this website is like the plug, cause uh... Whatchamacallit, yeah, I can. But yeah, more than likely, it's probably saying, it's probably not a rough translation, it's probably gonna be a very rough one. But let me open up Google Translate really quick. And then, but definitely, it's probably just saying, thank you for playing, yeah. See, PlayStation Home has been loved by many users since the service since August 2008. However, it was announced that it will end of March 2015. For more information about the service termination, please visit PlayStation Home's official website. And this is for Japan, it's only a few months until... Wait, it's only a few months left until the server, the end of service, but please remember your last PlayStation, or your last memory with PlayStation Home. So yeah, it's just basically the company saying, thank you, and you know, just giving a general like update on like the situation. Like, yeah, using context clues, I figured, figured that it will be that issue. But uh, that's pretty sad, oh no, I don't wanna share this on Tumblr, I don't even have a Tumblr. But hopefully, I'm not really gonna get too nitty gritty with this whole uh, setting up this, because I'm probably just gonna uh, try out putting this video on here, getting it to load, and probably gonna call off the livestream, since I'm trying to just relax today, and just do some other things, but um... And cause I know I'd be going crazy long in my livestreams, like almost two to three hours. But my goal is just to get this video, yeah, it is pretty damn sad, but you know, you got me trying to restore content for it. Okay, let's see. 64360 should work on this space. I don't know, that video was acting wonky though. Wonk you. Okay. Yeah, now I'm hearing the music now. Bruh. Alright, so while my very slow internet is downloading that and probably will lag my livestream, um, we're going to be doing this, but yeah. Yeah, even though I don't like using this website, uh, it does this job, so what we're gonna do is go ahead to the... This will probably be in the patch, since I'm gonna be working on this uh, probably later on, but uh... Let me see, April 2012. I might just call it uh, GZ2015. So at least I know what it is when I come back to it, if I gotta change it. Okay, save that. And then uh, what we're gonna do is relaunch the space. But yeah, thank you guys, the 12 people who joined today's livestream, I know I do them randomly and I really don't tell people, but uh... I kinda like doing it randomly, just to see like how many people show up, but thank you for the likes, thank you for, you know, just tuning in with me. Failed to download, oof, what's the issue? Unless it's hardcoded. Well, Destination Home Online need a PSN account, because my PlayStation 3 is banned. Yeah, you'll definitely need a PSN account, and if your um, PlayStation 3 is banned, um, all you need to do is just change your console ID, which isn't too hard, so the way you could get a console ID, it's like if you have another console and you pull it from there, or you could just use like eBay, get a good seller that sells console IDs, and then uh, just utilize that. Also, what I recommend is, don't use your official account, um, use a burner one, on, like, if you have your main account on a PS3, just go ahead and uh, like delete it. But yeah, that's what I would highly recommend. I'm gonna rename this video, because I think this is like literally hardcoded, like everything needs to be the exact same file name, cause that did not like that. Oh snap, I may have to reload the space in time, cause I don't think I saved it. So it's probably gonna reload from the old configuration. Ah, this is gonna be a pain. Alright. Don't know why that video ain't showing up, oh wait, 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 it is. I don't know here, like you could uh, back when... Like this was a minigame, you could actually just uh... Get onto the stand right here. And you can see here by like the audio. Like you can't hear the audio until you get like close to it. But yeah. That's kinda cool though. But yeah, my goal is uh, pretty much done, it's just crazy how much content these guys made. Granzilla is definitely one of my favorite uh... Like, home developers. Like, oh yeah, that's my favorite space. Like Granzilla made my hat that I'm wearing, and they made this cardigan that I'm wearing, I used to rock on home. But yeah. But yeah, I think this is pretty much, I'm pretty satisfied with this livestream, I was just, you know, randomly trying to do the patch update, and I was like, why not, I'll just livestream it again, since y'all guys like to watch. But um, yeah, thank you guys for tuning in, um, for sure, this livestream will be probably archived on my channel in like on the next, I don't know, day or so, since it takes a while for YouTube to process this, and um... To basically have it re-uploaded, but yeah, if you guys missed any part of this livestream, I would definitely have it up on my channel soon. But uh, yeah, thank you guys for tuning in, thank you guys for watching. And hopefully this patch will be out, what's today? I don't wanna say I'm doing it today, if it's Wednesday, no more than like Friday or Saturday, probably, I'll say that now, literally release it today, but uh... I'm pretty happy uh, what we did, we fixed Namco, we fixed Wipeout, um, we got some clothing items in, and we fixed some other stuff, probably I will have more added into the patch, but yeah. With that being all out the way, my name is Nagato, thank you for joining to Livestream 7 of my development work session. And yeah, y'all guys, take care.